Order at 7:00 PM. We do have a quorum present. Warren, Rob, would you lead us in a prayer, please, sir?
Sure. Heavenly Father, we ask you to give us the awareness tonight to act in the best interests of our citizens on the agenda items before us. We ask you to be with our staff, our first responders and our citizens. We ask your special comfort for the Mays family as they have lost someone and we ask you to comfort them in this and other families in our vicinity who are suffering tonight. We ask you to remember them. Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. And Diana's way ahead of us tonight, so let's do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Citizens' participation and comments, did we have any up front, Ms. Diana?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to make, I'd like to open that, that door, if you will. Anyone wishing to, to take up to three minutes to say anything they'd like to the city council, I'll be quiet here and if you would just identify yourself and your address and you'll have three minutes. I'll be quiet. Yeah, I didn't hear anybody speaking up, so we'll go on to number four, items of community interest, a couple items to cover. For A, the closure of Keller Haslett Road North for Henrietta Creek Bridge replacement project previously scheduled to begin January 5th has been delayed by text dot. Notification of the project start will be published as soon as received by text dot or from text dot notice will be posted up by the city's website and social media outlets. And I'll just interject real quick, Travis, do we have any update from today?
There's no update other than it will probably be towards the end of the month. There was a
Thank you, sir.
Previously undisclosed utility conflict for AT&T.
Okay, for B, applications are being received for the Haslett volunteer firefighters through January 15th and testing will be held January 16th. Chief, do you mind just giving us a rough idea how many folks you're looking for this year?
I think we have, we can take six and up to eight, but we'll probably try to stick around the six number.
Okay, thank you, sir. For C, the first day to file an application for a place on the May 1, 2021 general election ballot is Wednesday, January 13th, 2021. The office of mayor, city council member place two and council member place four will be on the ballot. Number five, staff reports to update on active items, projects and event recaps. Five A is update on the coronavirus COVID-19 issues, Jim and Kurt.
Yes, Chief will take the lead.
All right, well, first of all, thank y'all for your support during that rough little time. So, thank you. Alrighty, we are still in phase two of opening Haslett with no signs of changing. City Hall is still open to the public from 10:00 A to 3:00 P, Monday through Friday. In-person meetings are still discouraged but can occur by an appointment. We are not opening the community center up to programs, exercise classes or for the senior adults at this point. Library is open to the public from 10:00 to 3:00 Monday through Friday. Barbara, are you open on Saturday or just Monday through Friday?
Just Monday through Friday.
Okay, that's what I thought, sorry about that. All right, and municipal court window is also open to the public from 10:00 to 3:00 Monday through Friday. And Katie is still holding court via Zoom. Public Works staff continues their staggered start-stop times. The new playground has been installed at Gammel Park and we have received questions regarding when will that be open to the public. As reported earlier, people just tear down the barricade signs on the community park playground or they lift little kids over the fence at the Gammel Park Playground. There have been issues with people using the restroom on the outside of the buildings or going into the library to use their restroom. So staff has begun discussions on how to open the parks and restrooms to the public starting February 1. The city of Roanoke has a sandwich board signs posted throughout their parks and this is what it states. Be aware, the city does not have the capability to sanitize the equipment. Please remember to continue practicing good hygiene and to stay home if you are sick. This includes social distancing, wearing a face mask and avoiding commonly shared items. So we will probably work through what the signage would look like for us to put at, at the different areas in the park. Oh, let's see. Public Works has hired a building maintenance employee who will check and clean the restrooms on every Friday and Monday. This had been their normal practice before the toilet paper was being stolen out of the restroom, so if we start this back up, we'll, we'll have to continue to monitor that. There have been no changes in the executive order regarding youth sports. So HSA will begin spring registration soon. Opening the restrooms at Nance Field will allow games to be played at that facility. Additional signs will be placed at both Nance and Fire Station Fields regarding no sanitizing by the city. They would still have to follow all of their regulations set forth in cleaning the dugouts after each game. The fire department has been offered the vaccine shots. Ten, including myself, have received the shot and eight more scheduled for this Wednesday. Fourteen received it through their full-time job and ten have declined at this point for various reasons. Some will do it at a later date. Citizens wanting the vaccine should contact Tarrant County Public Health or you can pre-register at tarrantcounty.com forward slash COVID shot to see if they qualify for the vaccination. I believe we're still in the 1B and that's for 65 and older or if you have some underlying health issues, I think over the age of 16. So go to that website to see if you qualify to get the shot and you can wait in the long lines to get that. There were 64 positive cases in the city in December and with 25 recoveries and we had 108 in our county area. The total for 2020 was 146 cases in the city with 90 recovered and 273 in our county area. And Rob, do you have a report on the open meetings process?
Mayor and council, I would, I have on my calendar to follow up on the governor's next renewal of the disaster declaration. The current one was issued December 6th, so it should be tomorrow or the next day. I would expect the governor will further extend it and when that happens, I'll forward information to city administrator or either to him to forward to all of you or directly to all of you. However, he wants me to do that, but I will follow up with that and provide that information later this week, I would expect.
Okay, thank you, Rob. And yeah, and the mask order is still runs through February 28th, 2021 at this point. And that is the end of my report.
This is the mayor, just to add just a quick note, Kathleen and I both registered on that website that Kurt mentioned last Wednesday. We got a follow-on acknowledgement from the county that we were registered. Beyond that, no, no comment from them on whether or not we qualified and or when to expect a shot. But it seems to be working. I saw a number today, it doesn't, doesn't come back to me. But there's been a sizable number of folks in Tarrant County who have utilized that website. So I would encourage anybody who thinks they're, they're in the in the category of people eligible to get the shot to go ahead and register. And by the way, we're also talking to our, our local pharmacist and given, he said, give us a call once a week and if we get the vaccines in and you qualify, you know, you can get them here also. But just wanted to pass that on. Any questions or comments for Jim or Kurt or Rob on the COVID update?
Yeah, this is Mayor Pro Tem. To me, this rollout is not very well organized. I heard Judge Clay Jenkins on the news last night say that the state was supposed to have a master sign-up process but they were behind and didn't get the program rolled out to because the problem is the county health departments only get like 5% of the doses that are made available. So that's not, that's not very many and the county's website is only for the county health department. It doesn't include any other providers. But like he said, the state was supposed to have this all-encompassing one but this is, it's not working or they haven't made it available yet. So so everybody is left to call pharmacies and physicians and you can't get, it's very difficult to get through. And it's just, it's just sad. It could have gone much better, but.
And I agree and is, is if I receive information, I will share with Jim and Diana so we can try to get facts on the website and Jim can pass that on to y'all. So as I learn stuff, I will share.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Kathy and I signed up too with the county because that's, that's the only resource that I know of at the moment. So, you know, because they're still trying to get the healthcare workers vaccinated at the hospitals where the, who get most of the doses. So anyway, that's my time on the soapbox tonight.
Anybody else with a comment or question? I would just add to Warren's frustration. I think the whole country is frustrated. I watched a network news program tonight and it does not appear that Texas is in any worse shape than any of the other 49 states. It seems to be very common that, that there are vaccines on the shelf in the refrigerators across the country and there doesn't seem to be a mechanism that's working efficiently yet. But I do think there's certainly a lot of tension being given it to it, given to it, so we should see improvements. It's just a shame that, that since we knew from the time that we knew there was going to be a vaccine, there should have been planning conducted. So how, how do we get these out once, once the vaccine is approved? To, to just make you feel a little bit better, Warren, this had been mentioned at the, at the weekly meetings with, with Judge Whitley and his staff and, and we didn't get a very good response and I'm not throwing them under the bus. I have no idea and I'm not in a position to, to criticize. It's, it's very frustrating for all of us who are just sitting here waiting. I will tell you that I am not going to and I, I was surprised to see it last week where when we were having that, that 30, 35 degree temperature and it was wet and we had senior citizens standing out in the wet and cold waiting to get shots and that's across the country. It's just a shame, but it is, it is what it is and Kurt, just keep us informed.
Yes, sir.
Next item we have is the consent agenda. The only thing we have is the approval of the December 14, 2020 regular city council meeting minutes. Questions, comments, amendments? If I don't hear any, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So Mayor Pro Tem, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Tanya Morrow, all second.
Tanya's seconds, thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams is absent for the meeting, so he will not have a vote. Jessica Clark?
Olive Stane.
Patricia Hillborne?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. Thank you all. Action items, first one up is 7A, discuss, consider and act upon our award of contract for the 2021 capital improvement program reconstruction of Haslett Park subdivision streets.
It will be Travis on this.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was authorized at the November 9th city council meeting. And my screen just went blank, sorry about that. To advertise for bids for the cap, for the reconstruction of the rest of the Haslett Park subdivision streets. The bids were opened up on December 17th with three responsive bids being received. The, the option for RCC, which is the roller compacted concrete and the traditional concrete was in the specifications. The certified low bidder was DDM Construction with the traditional concrete option. Staff still firmly believes in the RCC process, but in this case, the traditional concrete option came in as the least expensive option for this project. This could be due to current economic conditions, could be due to contractors needing some work, but that's just how the bids came out. As previously shown, the RCC process is very quick. You can open up traffic pretty early with traditional concrete. You do have to give it that time for that concrete to bring up the strength. The good news is with the openness of the openness of Haslett Park with the driveways being kind of set far apart, traditional concrete can still be utilized with mineral interruption to the residents. Council will also recall that DDM Construction was the low bidder on the last RCC project. Went through back and forth a couple times with thinking about how to present this. Basically, their, their field personnel were outstanding. They were very communicative with the residents. They, they made sure to let staff and the residents know what was going on, where they are going to be the next day, any problems that came up, they came out and told us right away. The office staff had a little bit more of, less communication, less communication when residents needed to know what was going on as in regard to resident claims specifically in Brettwood Estates. The project manager of the, of the last project is no longer with the company. A new project manager will be in charge of this project. So the recommendation is that DDM has, has corrected their possible issues with their office staff and as far as, as engineering of Public Works is concerned, their field staff did an outstanding job. I will state that when other cities call me and ask for review, I'll say that I've never seen a cleaner construction site. Every day trash was picked up on that site. So that's just something to, that, that they're, that they're good at. As far as the bidding, the low bid did come in over budgeted resources by approximately $172,000. After getting that, staff went and researched, staff me, went and researched other bid tabulations. I grabbed bid tabulations from my contacts over several cities. Basically, the, the price that came in is the best in town right now. Concrete pricing has come down during the COVID era. Additionally, the FDR pricing has come down. But this pricing represents the best that I've seen. Looking at the projected metrics for the, the street maintenance tax through the first quarter of this year, the street maintenance tax fund has collected 51% of expected revenue. Compare that to last year, it's kind of on the same track as, as basically collecting double of what was projected. Additionally, we have some cost savings that were from the intermodal capital project that can be applied to this project. So keeping the same budgeted resources, applying those cost savings, you still end up with a positive balance in that street maintenance tax account at the end of the, at the end of the year. The only thing that, that should be pointed out with that is that depending on the timing of invoices that the street maintenance tax may not have enough in that account because it is updated as taxes come in. So the general fund may need to kind of float that, that account and be reimbursed later. So short of the sales tax dollars just completely falling off for the remainder of the fiscal year, there's little risk. With that, staff recommends awarding the contract of the reconstruction of Haslett Park subdivision streets to DDM Construction and to fund the cost overrun through a combination of capital project savings and street maintenance tax revenue. And with that, I will take any questions.
I'm sure there's other folks with a question. From, from a timeline standpoint, Travis, how, how will the traditional concrete with the rebar, metal rebar compare to if, to, to what we did with, with the RCC last go-around? For example, if, if I'm a homeowner in Haslett Park, how long will my driveway be inaccessible versus the, what I assume was a much shorter period of time with the RCC?
So with the RCC, we could usually get traffic back on it the same day. With the traditional concrete, you really need to have at least three days of there being that driveway closed. When I said that the openness of the subdivision yields benefit, that, that's true because they can pour half a street at a time. And then so they could pour the street between driveways, work out with the resident knowing that, hey, for the next three days, you're going to have to park on the street. And obviously they would put up some cones and some type of warning there. So it, it, it does add some, some inconvenience to the residents without using the RCC. But traditional concrete, you know, it, it's, it's, it does take a little bit longer. Even if you use the higher Lee strength concrete, it does take a little bit longer to set up.
Anybody else with questions or comments?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
For Travis? Travis, when we look at the life of this street at the RCC street versus the traditional concrete, is there any, is there much difference? Do they both have about the same lifespan? I've forgotten this information.
Yes, they do have the same lifespan and it's based really upon what's underneath it. So when you do the full depth reclamation, that, that's what supports the concrete structure. So whether it has rebar or whether it's just compacted concrete, they have the same lifespan of 40 to 50 years.
I had a question too. You had, we had said at one point that all streets at the same time, is that still the case of doing all, all the streets or having like one available or what were your thoughts on that?
This will probably be more staggered. Instead of doing a, you know, one street all at one time, the FDR process will probably be all at one time. So there may be streets that are dirt, you know, compacted dirt longer than others just because that's a different, you know, process. So the first thing you have to do is get the base set and then do the concrete after that. So the actual concrete itself and that'll be staggered by how much concrete they can get during the day. How many trucks are available? Can they pour 300 feet at one day or can they pour 50 feet on another street? So it'll be a little bit more of a balancing act and, and communication will be key. Through Public Works, we've talked about how we're going to communicate with residents. Last time we used flyers on doors. That process proved to be cumbersome and not very effective. We're thinking more along this time of having a special tab set up on the, on the website where constant project updates could come or setting up this email address where if you wanted to get an update of what's going on, you could sign up for something like that. So we, we've talked through a couple of different things of how to communicate better with the residents.
And I think that's a very good point. I think where, where we've stubbed our toe on similar projects in the recent past, it's when the perception was there. I'm not going to say we weren't communicating as well as we could, but certainly the perception on the part of the citizens was that we were not doing that. So if and when that's approved, I, I think that's the starting point on those communications and I think if I, I'm open to suggestion as, as I'm sure is Travis and everybody working on this. Is there a way to reach out to our citizens that are going to be impacted and ask them how they would best like to be informed and kept up, up to date? And I, that's just a thought that crosses my mind. Those of you that are you know, communicating with, with students or friends or whatever within your subdivisions, there's probably other ideas, but I think to, to get on top of this and let people know it's coming and, and how would you like to be communicated with would be, you know, a big plus for everybody.
One app or one, I guess avenue that we use is the Remind app. I don't know if that's something the city could use or not. It can be accessed through your phone or through your computer and people sign up to get kind of like the day, like the email updates, but it's actually through your, like a text message. And it's all traceable, so you can't be where you are saying something. There's no like private areas. So I don't know if that's something or not.
Mayor Golden, the Text My Gov app that we have now will do what Councilmember Morrow has said. And if Public Works, Travis's staff can communicate with the residents there, they can sign up through their cell phone and then we can send outgoing reminders to them over the Text My Gov. So that, that might be another thing that we can offer.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anybody else?
Travis, how does the, the traditional concrete, the finished product going to look compared to the RCC? Like I know the, with the RCC, it had kind of the rough edges and it was the base kind of was gravel and like on the sides and it was expected that the grass and stuff would grow up. Is that kind of the same process then for the traditional?
For the traditional, it should be formed, so there'll be a hard edge on it. There still is going to be the gravel on the edge that the, the grass is going to have to grow over. So it's that's actually treated base. That kind of helps, keeps, keep the concrete set. As far as the texture and appearance of it, it should be the same. It should be the same machine finish or broom finish on it. So you won't notice a big difference between the two sections, other than perhaps the new section being a little bit brighter because it hasn't had two years of bleaching on it.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinarily wouldn't be able to afford this project. The engineer's estimate was a little bit over $2 million for the traditional concrete, just about $550,000 less than that ordinarily wouldn't be able to afford. So during this economy, we've taken advantage of that.
Anybody else with a question or comment? Are we ready to move on a motion then?
Okay, I'll make a motion if I can find it. I move city council award the contract for the 2021 capital improvement project reconstruction of Haslett Park subdivision streets to DDM Construction and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract.
Is there a second?
Hillborne, second.
Hillborne, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Jessica Clark? Jessica, if you said anything, you, you weren't live.
Hi, I think my phone just hung up, so I missed whatever the motion was.
It, it's as quoted, it was move the city council award the contract for the 2021 capital improvement project reconstruction of Haslett Park subdivision streets to DDM Construction and authorize the city administrator to execute the same.
Okay, aye.
Patricia Hillborne?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Thank you all. 7B, discuss, consider and act to authorize a new capital project Main Street repairs to approve the addition of funding for the same. Main Street repairs to approve the addition of funding for the same in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget and to direct staff to advertise and receive bids for the project. Travis?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor Council, uh, this was a request, uh, back in September last year to look at the condition of Main Street, uh, as far as, um, how that pavement is responding. Uh, it appears that, uh, that initial assessment, it, it has gotten worse. Which is forcing a need for an unplanned capital project. Uh, there's two options that, that, uh, Public Works and, and I have looked at as far as, uh, making this, uh, emergency repair, basically. One is to only replace the failed areas of the street, uh, basically with the same process of what we're looking at for intermodal. Uh, with a flex base and a, uh, four thousand PSI, uh, concrete, which is uh, heavier concrete than what was originally placed there. Uh, this may produce a real patchwork look to the street, uh, with some panels being new, some panels being old. Um, and it doesn't mitigate that future failures of, of the concrete panels may happen. Uh, the other option is to, uh, replace about a hundred and twenty feet of Main Street, which is really the worst section, uh, on both sides. Because of this, that would force the project, at least in the engineer's estimate, to be over fifty thousand. So, uh, formal advertisement and sealed bid would take place. And, uh, staff is recommending, uh, the fast track of this project to take advantage of the road being closed, uh, for the Keller Haslett Bridge replacement. Uh, the reason for that is that the, the most amount of heavy traffic comes from the BNSF rail yard. And once that option is not available for them to come through, it makes the job so much easier. The traffic control will be a lot, uh, less. You can close off the sections, basically just allowing, uh, for residents to access those streets. Staff recommends that the funding come from general fund reserves and replace, and option B, which is replacing the, the small area between one fifty-six and first, and then uh, the hundred and twenty feet of Main Street between first and second. With that, I'll open up for questions.
Questions, comments?
Councilmember Morrow, is this the item that you had asked that we talk about?
It was. And, and like Travis mentioned, I was back in September that, um, it's, it's, the road is in very poor condition. And like you said, it's gotten worse. So I know it was one of our midterm, um, strategic, strategic plan options. And then I thought with savings and money at intermodal, but I guess that's going to Haslett Park, which is okay too. But, um, with the, with the bridge being, or the road being closed, if it was possible to do it this time, I, I agree with everything Travis said. It's, it needs to be, um, replaced. It's, it's, it's can damage some vehicles actually when you're, when you're driving at any, any speed. So I'm just glad it's on here. And if it's, you know, if it's possible, I, I would say option B, just because like Travis said, with the patchwork and coming and you have to replace the other areas eventually. That's kind of how I'm feeling toward is, is option B.
Anybody else? If, if somebody was trying to talk, I don't think, I, I didn't understand it.
Hey, uh, Travis, will we be able to protect that pretty brickwork we got there at the intersection?
Yes, the, the concrete repairs will take place after the brickwork. The brickwork will stay in place as it is.
Anybody else?
If you want to try. Jim, you want to try that again? When you spoke up, you were pretty garbled.
I, I think I got that, uh, he asked if Barcy to update the general fund reserves if the, yes, okay, he's.
Glad you got that. Um, you know, uh, Councilmember Morrow had mentioned the savings on intermodal. You know, I'm, I'm hopeful even that in the sales tax fund that, that we won't actually need that savings from intermodal. So if our sales tax keeps coming in like it is, we should be fine without it, other than having to maybe float in the short term on that. But, um, our sales tax has come in, as Travis mentioned on the previous project. It's coming in over budget already. And so, um, barring any complications with that, um, plus additional funds that we have set aside in the general fund for strategic plan and then also the um, shouldn't be a problem, you know, to fund this.
Did that make the point? You needed us, you needed us to hear Jim? And give us. Now, if, if it made sense, just give it, okay, thumbs up. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else with a question or comment? I, I would agree with, uh, with Tanya's thought about option B. If we're going to do it, might as well do it uh, as close to being, uh, a, a complete replacement a, as opposed to the patchwork. Uh, sounds like a great idea. Uh, if, if nobody else has a question or comment, somebody want to make a motion?
So, uh, if, when Travis has put this on the fast track, does this mean he can, uh, dip into those, that pool of contractors that we established? Or does this, are we still going to have to advertise for this?
Uh, no, this is advertising bids. That, that pool was for consultants, uh, to do engineering and architecture projects. So, but we'll, we'll advertise it. We'll get it out there as quickly as we can. Uh, we'll put a short bid time on it and make sure that, uh, we give it out to our, our local guys as well. That would be more suited for this type of small job.
So Travis, remind us what the, uh, what the timeframe is on the bridge, uh, the bridge construction project. I mean, it sounds like it, it was, it was a fairly long period of time, wasn't it?
Right. Originally, it was supposed to go from January to June. As the timeline slips a little bit with the utility relocations, uh, we, we do have a five month window at least to get this done.
Yeah, I mean, so the delay in the start actually works to our advantage as far as trying to get it to coincide. You know, the same time they're doing that work. So it doesn't sound like it's going to be more of an issue than, than would normally be. Anybody ready for the motion?
I'll go again here. Um, I move city council authorize a capital project Main Street repairs. Do I need to specify which option? Option B. Uh, okay, there it is. Um, which is replacing this. Oh, no, I thought right. Okay, I'll say option B. Um, be added to the fiscal, the FY twenty twenty-one budget and direct staff to advertise and bid the project.
Is there a second?
Air Pro Tim seconds.
Any further discussion? Still a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hilborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Seven C. Discuss, consider, and act. Excuse mayor and council absences if any. Anybody have any coming up that you're aware of? Hearing none, let's go to eight. Receive report from Public Improvement District Subcommittee. Rob?
I do have one item, Mayor and Council, to bring to your attention, um, briefly. Uh, in about mid-December, uh, the city received an update from the LaTerra developer, uh, that they are planning on closing on the, on the LaPrell tract in January. Um, and they plan to submit a concept plan, uh, to the city once that has occurred or sometime in mid to late January, I believe is what the email said. Um, and so of course, we'll keep you posted on that. We'll circulate that to the subcommittee members if and when received. Um, I just wanted to, to update you that that's what we had heard. Um, nothing, uh, firmer than that has happened yet, but, but that was the last information that we heard. And, uh, with that, I'll, I'll see if, um, uh, if the sub, I, subcommittee members, uh, Warren and, and Councilmember Hilborn, do you, do you all have anything? I guess you don't have anything to add because nothing's been sent to you really. But, uh, if there's anything that you want to say, uh, or, uh, Jim and Wes, or anybody have anything else to add to that?
Well, this is Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, no, nothing really to add. We'll be happy to meet with them if, uh, if they want to go that PD route.
Yes, uh, always happy to meet with them.
Yeah, I think, I think we updated council last time that we had, uh, said that we were open to considering a bid for that area and kind of what the parameters are that, that we were looking for. Um, and so we'll, we'll, we'll see what they send to us and, and go from there.
Okay. Any questions or comments? That, do we need to go to exec for anything on, on the properties?
Uh, no, sir, we do not tonight.
Okay, just, just, okay, from that standpoint, if anybody has any questions and thinks we need to go holler now or forever hold your peace? Okay, so we'll skip over nine. We don't need ten, since there's no executive session. Anybody have anything for future agendas? Going once, going twice. Okay, folks, we're adjourned at seven forty-two. Happy New Year. Have a nice evening and stay safe this week.
Bye, everybody.
Welcome back, Jessica. Y'all stay safe.
Aye, thank you.
Jim, we can't hear. You sound like Darth Vader.
Diana, you can expect a, a, a letter from me later this week. Uh, I got a request from John Thomas on, on behalf of his son Sam, who is going to get his Eagle Scout later in January to do another one. Scout letter. So I'll try to get that to you in the next couple of days so we can get it. We, we've got a couple of weeks, but uh, he had reached out to me and I told him we'd try to get it out to him this week.
Sure, and that's awesome. I will look for that. Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Have a nice evening.